Good morning. I'm sorry, we're being a little late. Trying to make it up as quick as possible. This is a public hearing of the Committee at Whole regarding Bills Number 160170, 160171, 160172, and Resolutions Number 160180. Mr. Stitt, please read the titles of the bills and resolution.
Bill Number 160170. Orders to Adopt a Capital Program for the Six Fiscal Years 2017 Through 2022 Inclusive. Bill Number 160171, in order to adopt the fiscal 2017 capital budget. Bill Number 160172, in ordinance adopting the operating budget for fiscal year 2017. Resolution Number 160180, resolution providing for the approval by the Council of the City of Philadelphia of a revised five-year financial plan for the City of Philadelphia covering fiscal years 2017 through 2021 and incorporating proposed changes with respect to fiscal year 2016, which is to be submitted by the mayor to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority, the authority pursuant to the intergovernmental cooperation agreement authorized by an ordinance of this council approved by the mayor in January 3, 1992, Bill Number 1563-A, by and between the city and the authority.
Thank you, Ms. Stitt. Today, we continue the public hearing of the Committee at Whole to consider the bills read by the clerk that constitute proposed operating and capital spending measures for fiscal 2017, a capital program and a forward-looking capital plan for fiscal 2017 through fiscal 2022. Today, we will hear testimony from the following departments: Airport, Water Department, Streets, Free Library, and Parks and Recreation. First person to testify, Mr. Stitt, is...
Shelley Cameron, Chief Executive Officer of the Airport.
Thank you, sir. Morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Council President Clark, and good morning to the other members of City Council. My name is Shelley Cameron, and I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Philadelphia International Airport. Seated with me this morning is Tracy Borda, our Chief Financial Officer. I am honored to be before the committee today for the first time in my new role to present testimony on behalf of the Division of Aviation's fiscal year 2017 operating budget. I have identified three goals which are my top priorities as CEO. One, improving customer service by enhancing the passenger experience through robust customer engagement. Two, improving existing airport facilities. And three, pursuing facility expansion opportunities that will strengthen the airport's regional position as a world-class hub. As you know, the airport is a self-sustaining entity which operates without the use of local tax dollars. While the airport does not require local funds to operate, it is still one of the largest economic drivers in the Philadelphia region. Yearly, PHL helps to generate an estimated $14.4 billion in spending and accounts for more than 141,000 jobs within the region. With respect to operations during calendar year 2015 alone, PHL accommodated 31.4 million passengers on more than 411,000 aircraft takeoffs and landings. Our passenger levels have continued an upward trajectory over the past few years with activity now near pre-economic downturn levels. These numbers also make PHL the 19th busiest airport in the United States in terms of passenger travel and the 12th busiest when it comes to operations. PHL is growing in other ways as well. The airport has taken on several new improvement projects to support the goals of increasing our capacity and the overall customer experience. We are nearly ready to unveil our new baggage claim facilities in Terminal F. This outstanding facility, which is scheduled to open later this year, is the result of a strong partnership with American Airlines and will now connect all terminals and increase airport accessibility for arriving passengers looking to catch connecting flights. We anticipate this facility will open with LEED Gold Status, the second highest ranking possible given out by the U.S. Green Building Council. We are also progressing well with $190 million project to extend Runway 9 right, 27 left, and improve numerous taxiways, which will allow for more efficient operations on the airfield. In addition to our projects on the ground, we are continuing to explore potential new domestic and international air service in order to connect our region to new locations. Direct service to Asia is a top priority moving forward, and we will continue discussions with a number of major foreign carriers as we move throughout this year. Serving our passengers is an important job, and it is accomplished by a highly skilled and diverse workforce. At PHL, we take it great pride in promoting diversity within the Division of Aviation staff. As of February 2016, the Division of Aviation had 748 permanent employees, of which 71% were minority and 31% were female. Our staff also boasts 66 permanent and 37 temporary bilingual employees, which collectively speak at least 50 different languages to aid our diverse passenger base. The airport is also actively engaged in setting and monitoring participation goals for the city's program for minority, women, and disabled-owned businesses, as well as administering and monitoring two federal disadvantaged business enterprise programs. I know from my meetings with many of you how important this issue is to you. As I begin my tenure as CEO at Philadelphia International Airport, I want to assure you that this work is equally important to me. Our newly-named Office of Business Diversity focuses solely on these issues and is spearheaded by Kathy Padilla. She is here today to field any questions members may have around our efforts. In addition to our continued mission of promoting diversity at the airport, we also strive to promote inclusion in the community in which we live and work. Specifically, two of our goals, which are also broader goals of this body, are to advocate for the inclusion of locally-owned businesses in our concessions program and our contract work, and to continue to develop our career and technical mentorship program. At PHL, we are focused on fostering an environment with a healthy mix of local businesses and national brands. One such local success story, Athena Contracting, is a woman-owned construction firm based in the Second Council Manic District. This firm was certified under the Pennsylvania Unified Certification Program in July of 2015 and is currently working on the runway extension project. She does paving work. All of this work cannot be accomplished without the necessary resources for us to fulfill our mission. For fiscal year 2017, the airport's operating budget request totals $468.9 million, which supports operations and maintenance requirements at both Philadelphia International and Philadelphia Northeast airports. This request is an increase of $44.3 million over fiscal year 2016 estimated obligations, primarily due to higher salaries and benefits, ongoing engineering costs related to our capital program, expanded customer service programs, increased maintenance requirements due to new and expanded facilities, and additional debt service payments. Our operating budget request includes $193.6 million for the Division of Aviation, $139.6 million for debt service, $26.9 million for utilities, and $108.8 million for appropriations directly related to the police, fire, fleet management, technology, public property, sustainability, law, risk management, and finance departments. In summary, PHL continues to be engaged both internationally and nationally so that we can ensure passenger safety, expand our passenger base, and improve our overall quality of service, and in doing so, continue to be a positive and active member of the Philadelphia regional economic community. It is also important to note that the airlines and concession managers are continuing to take necessary efforts to ensure workers are receiving a living wage. We support this effort and any effort that compensates workers in accordance with council's living wage ordinance. Before I finish, I would like to recognize the outstanding employees behind me to my left and your right that are going through our Stars and Leads programs. These programs focus on professional development for administrative and entry to mid-level staff to prepare them for future leadership roles. I have a number of my staff here to help answer questions. Thank you again for offering me the opportunity to testify, and I'll be happy to start with those questions.
Thank you very much. Let me start it. I have a couple of questions. I'm gonna start with the theme with respects to participation. I notice in your testimony, you indicated the importance of it as it relates to ensuring that we have demographics within the city's workforce that reflect the demographics of the city.
Yes.
Just wanna correct, starting out with the exempt employees, which are employees that are not a part of the civil service system, so essentially, the department head has the ability to hire directly, or the mayor, or whomever ultimately makes that decision.
Correct.
Your numbers are seven exempts?
Seven executive staff.
Seven executive staff.
I think there are 12 exempt positions total.
And two of minority out of the seven?
That's correct.
All right.
And three women.
All right. And how many exempts do you have total?
I believe it's 12.
Does that include the seven, this total?
It does. It's inclusive of the seven, yes.
And of the 12, what's the minority count?
We're looking for the notes. I apologize. I thought I had that at my fingertips. Of the executive staff, I mean, I have the numbers off the top of my head. We're looking for the 12 exempts.
All right, you can have somebody look for it before you leave. You can give it to us.
I'm sorry.
All right. I'm saying, you can have someone look for it.
Okay.
Before you leave, if you can give us that number, please.
Okay, absolutely.
In your testimony, you also stated the airport consistently has hiring challenges, which is likely the reason why you had 100 non-vacant positions as of February 2016. But for FY '17, you're looking to increase the number of budgeted positions by 50, even given the challenges associated with filling the position you already have budgeted for. Can you talk to me about, basically, why? If you already have a number, a significant number of budgeted vacancies, and you're looking to add additional positions, can you tell me, is there a game plan on filling the existing positions and then subsequently the additional budgeted positions?
Understood. I'm gonna ask Shadee Olani-Pecun Lewis to come up. She's gonna help me with this question, but the first thing I'd like to point out is that we are normally at 790, much closer to 800. And so, we have lost a number of folks in a number of the disciplines that turn over in a big way during the course of the year. We have a lot of trouble holding custodial folks in those positions, and a lot of the skilled trades, once somebody leaves, we have a lot of trouble recruiting qualified folks to come in and fill those positions.
Yeah. If you can just explain to us why. This is one thing, City Council, we have more people knocking on our door than we can imagine, and understand, you know, it's a different position and maybe requires certain technical skills that we don't have here in City Council, but employment is a big issue.
Absolutely.
Kinda tell me why, why are we having challenges?
Good morning, Council President Shadee Olani-Pecun Lewis.
Good to see you again.
Same here, sir. Always good to see you, sir. In addition to what Shelley Cameron was sharing, we also are requesting additional 50 because we have 38 individuals who are in the drop program. And these are in the custodial and the skilled worker areas. And because once you're in drop, you know, that four-year window, you could leave at any time. And so, one of the things we want to ensure is that we're able to backfill those positions in a timely manner, as well as provide support succession planning. With respect to the skilled labor force, a lot of the barriers to entry is just being able to identify candidates who have the basic requirements to even test for the civil servant position. And so, we want a little bit of a lead time to be able to prepare for the inevitable departure of these folks. We also tend to have a lot of high turnover in our custodial workforce as well, so we're always trying to backfill that.
So, and thank you for hosting the job fair up at Temple University.
You're welcome, sir.
We had a lot of respondents. So, drop is four-year program traditionally? So, understanding the nature of drop, the whole point was to have a sense of when people will be leaving so you can prepare for that?
Yes, sir.
Did we wait, and I know you just got there in that position, until we realized that people were leaving? Or did we prepare for that in terms of, you know, getting a list of individuals on the list in anticipation of the departure of a significant number?
As you know, so before we are aware of a person's entering in drop, they have to file an application. And once that is done, the department is made aware that the employee plans to...
It's four years. So, are you saying that these people will be in drop, or I mean, what's the...
No, these 38 folks...
Are they leaving now?
These 38 individuals have applied for drop, and they can leave any time within the four-year window, meaning that you could leave the day after drop or within the four years. So, we want to plan for that.
Yeah, but I'm trying to understand, why do we have 100 non-vacancies? What relationship drop has with that? If you're telling me that we lost a lot of people due to drop?
Well, that's one of the other. Drop, the fact that we have challenges with high turnover in the custodial positions, as well as trying to properly fill the skilled workers. Many of the folks who apply for these positions, we have challenges in terms of them not having the basic requirements to test for these skilled worker positions, such as carpenters and the likes. And so, these are all civil service positions. So, these aren't exempt, and they have to test into that. In addition, we have competition with other departments where these folks are applying for. The pay is not market pay, so some of them even come in and they choose not to come.
I hate to keep jumping in, because employment is like an issue.
It is.
So, you said carpeting, what are the disciplines? I mean, what are the... I'm just trying to help you, because if you're telling me that you have challenges in getting people engaged for employment, and we need to know that, because we will, I mean, we have a, I know a member of my staff and former councilman Good, who actually has been working real hard on developing the appropriate registry, so we have a list of individuals. So, if it calls for us to get engaged and funnel people to you for those positions, please give us that list and the requirements.
Sure.
And the specifications for those job opportunities. I mean, I just can't believe that we can't fill positions.
Sure, absolutely so.
I mean, if you're telling me that we have difficulty hiring pilots? All right, okay, I can kinda understand that, but...
Two of the disciplines that are particularly difficult are HVAC mechanics.
Okay.
Trying to find folks that are trained at the right level to be able to take care of the seven terminals and the very large airport complex. We have a number of different systems in place as well, and so, those folks have to have a lot of technical skills. The custodians are just a high turnover area, and so, at any one time, we'll recruit and establish a list of, say, 60, 100 people, and we'll interview them all and get them through, start getting them through the process to get them hired. But as we do that, some drop out, and it's just a very difficult discipline to hire for. One of the other things I want to mention about the custodial staff is that as we focus on customer service and the passenger experience, it's really everything that a passenger sees and feels and hears and smells as they go through the terminal. And so, we're trying to make sure that our terminal is spit-spot clean. And so, we're trying to beef up our custodial staff to make sure that at night, when it's not as busy, we can do some of those deep cleanings and make the passenger experience better. This is something that's important to us and also important to the airlines.
And Council President, two other things I failed to mention is that because we're at the airport and we have to have a security clearance, many of these individuals who do satisfy the civil service requirements may not pass a medical or security background clearance, and that's another challenge, another barrier to staffing adequately.
Meaning, they can't pass the urine test?
Some, yes, or background checks, sir, yes.
Custodians require an airport badge to get behind security to do their jobs, and so, they have to pass a criminal history background check, as required by the federal government.
All right, so, all right, I don't wanna belabor this, but can we follow up with you? So, this is, I mean, 100 jobs. I mean, I know these 2,000 people prepared to take those jobs as we speak. So, I really would like to help you on that to ensure that we move ahead.
And we would welcome that help, thank you.
Yeah, please. Should I follow up with Ms. Lewis on that?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I used up all my time on one question. I'm gonna sneak one in real quick. With respects to the expansion and construction projects, relatively quick, can you just give us a sense of where we are with that? I know that was a big issue earlier on in terms of whether or not we were going to proceed in full force, and then I know the airlines were balking at the willingness to participate in the full expansion, and we didn't really hear much else about it. You know, we were, we in council, we bought into this notion that we were ready to add another runway, and we took a relatively difficult vote in proceeding, and we did everything we were gonna do. And then, after this issue gets resolved and the contracts got resolved, and then we're told that this possibility that we won't have the full expansion.
Well, I think it's not a matter of if, but a matter of when, when it comes to the new runway. When we took a look at operational levels at the airport, so takeoffs and landings over the last 10 years, those are down by 23%. And it's really the activity that drives delays. Delays drive additional costs for the airlines, which ultimately drive them to approve projects to move forward. So, the new runway with the 23% drop in takeoffs and landings isn't needed quite as urgently today as it was before. We are still committed, however, to making progress on that project. If we were to start today, that project would take anywhere from 10 to 12 years to complete. And so, we think that it would be prudent and make sense on our part to actually continue to move forward with enabling projects that have innate value in and of themselves. So, for example, the FAA Air Traffic Control Tower that is in the way of the new runway is over 30 years old and needs to be replaced regardless of whether the new runway gets built in the next couple of years or not. So, we are trying to pursue moving forward with projects like that. We are in discussions with the airlines to talk about what comes next with this program. But if you look at passenger levels, which are only down by 3% over that same 10-year period as compared to the 23% decrease in landings and takeoffs, it starts to drive the decisions towards doing terminal work as opposed to the new runway. Again, the master plan that we developed that 10 years ago, that was announced five years ago, is still a really good master plan. It's just a simple matter of what comes when and resequencing and reprioritizing. There are some projects that are still moving forward, and one was the one I talked about, the $109 million runway extension and taxiway work.
Okay, I'll come back, but I do, I can speak for myself. The support for the merger was based on the belief that there was gonna be this massive expansion of the airport, and I kind of feel like I was duped a little bit because we did that, and I'm not blaming you because you were not in your current role. We supported that, and then we're told by those people who asked for the level of support that, oh, by the way, we're not gonna do the massive expansion. And I'm not even asking you for an answer to that, because that's how I feel.
There are two things I would throw into that mix, though. One is that we do have $1.6 billion worth of also authorized projects. The second is that the use-and-lease agreement that you were part of helping us to negotiate does include a deadline of December of this year for the airlines to make a choice on moving forward with one, two, or all three of a set of pre-identified projects. So, we should know more by the end of the year as to what moves forward.
Okay, thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Ms. Cameron, you talked right in the beginning about the whole customer experience, enhancing the customer experience. Just have kind of two related questions. One, I know you probably can't do a whole lot about. We've read about, because of security issues, the longer lines that are, people have gone through with security, and we understand that with all the things going on in the world. So, I was wondering if you could comment on that, what interaction you have with the federal government or whatever to try to address that as best as you can? And I guess just generally, is there anything else? You mentioned the baggage area. Is there anything else that you are working on, maybe in the future, that will better that customer experience?
Sure. So, the TSA lines, we have been told by the TSA administrator that we should expect longer lines this summer. So, we have started a series of meetings with our local TSA folks to talk about what we can do to make sure that we address those lines in any way that we can. TSA staffing levels are controlled at the federal level, and so, we can't influence that, but what we can do is we can do things like monitor when things start to get backed up at one checkpoint versus another. We can deploy our summer staff, our interns, to help us do that, and then we can help adjust the staff members that we have on hand at the time to hopefully make that a better experience. So, we are talking through with them to do whatever it is that we can to try and address those issues. We also have a media blast going out soon that will try to inform all of our passengers that they should arrive at the airport well in advance of their flight. So, hopefully, that'll help a bit. You know, there are a lot of behind-the-scenes things that we're doing as well with baggage claim. And, you know, I think that as we talk to the airlines about what to move forward with next, when it comes to terminal work, baggage security and the efficient handling of baggage will be a priority.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And again, on that first issue, I know it's, a lot of that's out of your control, but I know it's something that, obviously, when you talk about the customer experience, waiting in line that long, but...
Well, it's our airport.
It's the world we live in, I get you. All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning to each of you. I think when I had the opportunity to talk with you all briefly some time ago, I told you that I was excited about the level of estrogen involved in leadership at the airport. And with that in mind, my first question is in regards to the issue of a gender breakdown regarding airport employees. And currently, it's 69% male and 31% female. Tell us, what are you doing to sort of bring some level of equity or parity there with the number of women who are employed there? And I'm looking at your testimony. You note that in 2015, you hired 44 new employees, and 45% were female, and so, obviously, we see that there was some effort. But tell me, this current administration under your leadership, what's your plan?
Well, when there's civil service positions, we're clearly subject to the rule of two. And so, you know, all of our hiring managers understand how important diversity is to the city and to this organization. So, as they make hiring decisions between that choice of two for civil service positions, that's at top of mind. When it comes to exempt positions that Council President Clark asked about earlier, I'm very happy to say that of the folks that I have recommended for exempt positions and have hired, they include Shadee, Tracy, Kathy Padilla, who is back here, and then there are a couple of existing exempt position folks that were kept. Leah Douglas, who manages our art program and is our chief image person, and Maria Mahoney, who's our Director of Legislative and Government Affairs.
And so, I wanna go back to the portion of your response associated with civil service. And our councilwoman-at-large, Blondell Reynolds Brown, has surely been a leader in the area of working to address the issue of the rule of two. And I understand all of the civil service regs, but when you look across the country, what we see is that respective departments and agencies in different cities across the country are in communication with their civil service departments to figure out what creative strategies within the rules and regs governing the overall process. How can you, through innovation, through sort of creative outreach in where we're trying to recruit? Have you engaged in any of those conversations with our civil service commission?
Oh, absolutely. We're working hand-in- We're working hand in glove with them on addressing anything that we can with the rule of two or in those creative opportunities. Some of the things I can point out that we in the airport specifically do is we're members of a number of national and local organizations like WTS, Women Transportation Society, where we actively go out as a senior team, and our management team goes out and talks to women who are in college, in high school, to talk to them about careers in transportation. We're a member of COMTO, the Conference of Minority Transportation Officials, and we're active with them both at the local level and the national level, and that's a way that we can recruit minorities and women to be interested in applying for jobs that the airport might have open. Our job fair was another perfect example. We were there, we had a table, and that allows us sometimes to get access to folks that don't know about the civil service system, who are confused or unaware of how they can apply for a position within the city. And when we're out there talking to them, we can, we can help educate them. Additionally, and lastly, our Human Resources Department does a number of high school, college outreach events throughout the year, where they go out, set up tables, do career counseling, and talk about careers at the airport.
So, one, I want to commend you all for the job fair. Clearly, they are a huge hit in the community, because people are able to access you directly and not have to go to the airport, but they can reach you in neighborhoods. And I know Councilman Kenyatta Johnson, whose district houses the airport, has been a huge proponent of ensuring that that happens, and so I want to commend you all for that. With that in mind, I want to go back, my next question was relevant to what Councilman, Council President Clark talked about with the filling of custodial and skilled trades positions. Obviously, there's some extra work that needs to be done there, and I will hope that you all would continue to view council as partners as we move forward in the recruitment process there. Because I know if I went into the Ninth Councilmatic District and said to those people who line up to send us resumes that, you know, there are positions that we're having a difficult time filling, people would be saying how, you know, why, what, you know, what can we do so consider us to be partners? In addition to that, I want you to give us a summary, if you will, in regards to the subcontractors, the wages that they are paying, are there, are all of the subcontractors, you know, adhering to the rules and the pay established by this city? And to talk about the number of contracts, if you gave us an overall number of the amount of business that is being done, give us a breakdown in terms of MBE, WBE, and so forth.
Okay, let me take that in two parts. I'll talk about the living wage first, and then I'll call Kathy Padilla to the table to talk about our participation in the award of contracts. So, when it comes to the living wage ordinance that was passed by council, of course, the Division of Aviation employees are compliant. The, there are two real main groups that I want to address when it comes to that ordinance and that law. The first are subcontractors to the airlines. When we signed a new use and lease agreement with the airlines that was effective July 1st of last year, and in fact, that was a document that was worked on by the council and the airlines and the airport together, the airlines agreed to make all of their subcontractors compliant with the living wage. We went a step further, and we requested compliance statements from those subcontractors, and we have received them, and so have the airlines. And so, that is, at this point, what I can say about the subcontractors to the airlines. When it comes to the concession program, and that's another large group that was largely non-compliant with the living wage, or not non-compliant, I shouldn't say that, they weren't necessarily paying a living wage before the ordinance went into effect. The way the ordinance applies to that group is that we have a master lease with Marketplace. They're the master concession operator at the airport, and they're the ones that do sublease agreements with, I think it's around 56 vendors for about 170 restaurants and retail shops in the airport. Those retail shops and restaurants turn over on a staggered basis, so we'll have a set of them that are coming up for re-lease every year. They, the average term is somewhere around seven years. As a sublease comes up for renewal or to turn over to a new operator, those operators for the new lease are required to be compliant with the living wage. The only, and again, I say living wage, and it's the Living Wage Ordinance and the way it's spelled out in the ordinance.
And to find the question, my time is up, but you were answering the overall number in terms of contracts.
Yes, I'll ask Kathy Padilla to come up and address that.
Good morning, Councilwoman. At the airport, we are responsible for three separate diversity contracting programs, the OEO program, that is for locally funded projects, and two federal programs, the DBE program for construction projects generally funded by the FAA, and the concessions program called the ACDBE program. On the DBE program, our federal goal, which we have to follow the federal methodology for, is 14.39 percent. In 2015, we made 21.9 percent, and thus far in 2016, we're making 14.5 percent. And the ACDBE program, our goal is 16.45 percent. In 2015, we achieved 25.3 percent, and thus far in 2016, we're achieving 25.6 percent. In the OEO program, our goal is 30 percent. In 2015, we achieved 25.2 percent, and thus far in 2016, we're achieving 31.3 percent. So, we're exceeding all of our goals, and when we exceed our goals, we seek to raise them.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President, good morning.
Good morning.
I have five brief questions, so maybe keep the answers to a minute so I get them all in. The first question is a financial question on page three of your testimony. If I'm reading the numbers correctly, from fiscal 2015 to fiscal 2016, in the financial summary by class, Division of Aviation, we're going up about 45 percent. And in the bottom category, financial summary by class for the full aviation fund, we're going up about 26 percent. That seems like big increases from 15 to 16.
Good morning, Council, good morning, Councilman. My name is, I'm just making sure this, my name is Tracy Burda, I'm the Chief Financial Officer at the airport. So, I want to make sure I heard you right, you talked about debt service?
I'm talking about page three, huge increases on, in the middle of the page, financial summary by class, which has to do with, the big areas are purchase of services, which went up a lot?
Yes. I can speak to that first.
Payment to other funds.
Okay. So, in the purchase of services category, you're primarily dealing with contracts. We have a $1.6 billion capital program, so we're putting more effort into planning and design contracts to fulfill that $1.6 billion capital program. In addition, we have increased our contracts for maintenance of new systems and terminal facilities. We have a couple of different things happening. One, we have a new Terminal F bag claim facility that will be coming online this year, so that has to be maintained. There are systems within that facility as well that need to be maintained. In addition, we just have aged infrastructure, we're an older airport, and so we sort of see increase, increasing maintenance costs through the years. Those are the two big categories within contracts. I guess the third category would be with Shelley coming onboard and being the new CEO at the airport, we have a renewed focus on the passenger experience, and we're putting some efforts into passenger satisfaction surveys and assessment of our facilities, and looking, just with that renewed focus, trying to make sure that the passenger experience is a top-notch at Philadelphia International.
In the bottom category on page three of your testimony?
Yep.
Employee compensation went up 25 percent. Was that a union negotiation, or why was that increase so dramatic?
Well, one of the issues that we did budget for is the 3 percent increase for DC 47 that is happening, and then we left...
This is 25 percent, I think it's three or four, maybe.
Well, I think it goes, there's a couple of different things in there. One was the 3 percent increase for DC 47 employees. We also built in a contingency in case DC 33 should have a settlement during the year. We also have a lot of for overtime for special events, especially the DNC coming. And then lastly, we did do an increase in positions that we discussed earlier with Council President Clark.
This seems like a big number, $25 million. And then the purchase of services that we were referring to before that went up, it's going up $40 million from 97 to 137? In the bottom category, purchase of services, we spent $97 million last year, we planned to spend $137 million this year. Seems like big increases.
So, okay, so I'm looking, so that involves all the other city departments for whom we also fund. Those would be OIT, police, fire, public property, fleet management. So, we are, we are, there's money within each one of those? I can get back to you with the details?
Yeah, can you get back to me with the details of those two categories?
Purchase of services and other city departments.
And employee compensation and payment to other funds. Just give me the breakdown of last year, what we, how we paid it versus this year. Here's my other question. You have a lot of vacancies, as the Council President was pointing out. I just did a quick search on Indeed, in the city of Philadelphia, there's 133 jobs right now for HVAC people, which means it's a tough spot probably to fill. But we do have technical schools in Philadelphia that do these kinds of things. I know, I heard of one called Orleans Technical, and there's other ones on North Broad and all over the city. Have you approached these schools and tried to bring them in the fold to help us get people for these jobs?
We'll bring back up Shadé to help answer that question.
Good morning, Councilman. Shadé Alani-Pacun Lewis. I've just informed that we are aware of the schools, they just don't offer those technical specialties that we need for at the airport.
So, is it possible for you to contact the schools, tell them what you need?
Yes.
And ask them to train for those jobs?
We can make inquiry of that, yes, sir, and ask them, see if they can offer that.
One of the comments, are there 26 vacancies of retail locations coming up at the airport this year? Is that normal?
Yes, yes, absolutely. We turn over a certain number every year.
So, that means there's 26 opportunities for entrepreneurs in the city to open locations?
That is correct. We are doing an outreach session to recruit businesses to come in and operate those locations this Thursday at the airport.
One of the comments, recently I took a, I went to Florida for the day, left in the morning, came back at night on a Saturday, went to Terminal C, there was a 40-minute wait, as Councilman Greenlee's talking about, a 40-minute wait in Terminal C. I walked over to Terminal B, it was 10 minutes. Is there a way to have on your boards that show the, you know, the gates and so forth, the waiting times at each gate for security? So, it says Gate B is 10 minutes, Gate C is 40 minutes, so I know which gate to go to?
Two things. One, there is a TSA app that we would be happy to show you that does monitor wait times at the different locations at different airports.
Yeah, but I'm talking about to put it right on your board so that Philadelphia resident can say, oh, let me go to B versus C, it just improves that customer experience.
That's right, and that's the other thing that we're looking at this summer in partnering with TSA. One will be to help us manage it actively with people, the second will be to introduce a technology, or just an information system that'll allow people to see what the waits are.
That's all you gotta do is tell people, go to B, don't go to C, and you've solved the issue.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
I can't help on the estrogen end, but I'll try to give some good testosterone comments. And first of all, I want to thank you for being, I've been in many airports, some of them I had the distinction of having to sleep overnight in, and it's no fun. In my airport in Philadelphia, I get good service. I don't, I haven't experienced some of the things my colleagues have experienced, but the reason I get good service is because of good employees. And good employees, both in the official airport city worker end, but also some of your subcontractors go out of their way, and often are in post 9/11, on point with the security. When Councilwoman Blackwell dealt with the Ebola crisis, they had to go on those planes fearlessly, and make sure that we were okay as passengers. And so, it was not a heavy lift when Councilman Black, Councilman Good, former Councilman Good fought for a living wage. My question is twofold. How did we communicate the executive order first, and then our interest in having a living wage to those subcontractors? That's my first question. And are they in compliance?
Okay, so the answer to your first question, it was, when we signed the new use and lease agreement with the airlines, so that's the first group of subcontractors, it was in the use and lease agreement that the airlines had to be compliant with that ordinance. So, it's right there in the contract, if you will, the use and lease agreement. We also talked to them about it and received letters, a letter from American Airlines on behalf of the other airlines that they would be compliant with that.
So, to date, all of the subcontractors are in compliance with our living wage ordinance?
We have received letters of compliance from all of the subcontractors. I can ask Deputy Mayor Laser to come forward and talk a little bit about what they're doing to ensure compliance as well. When it comes to the second group of subcontractors, which are the concession operators, when we signed a new concession agreement that council also approved about a year and a half ago, it was written into that agreement that they would be compliant with the living wage as those subleases turned over.
So, I know what our intent was?
Yes.
What has been the impact?
Yes.
Rich Laser, Deputy Mayor for Labor, Councilman, just so, we came in, so prevailing labor standards falls under my office, so when we came in, we asked, I asked Parry at Labor Standards to do an audit of the ground handling folks at the airport. So, we have conducted a numerous amount of interviews with workers, with our city investigator who went into the airport, did interviews with workers, and we also looked at certified payrolls from the, through the airlines, and at this moment, there are no violations at the airport when it comes to wage issues.
So, my former colleague and now Mayor, Mayor Kenny, was a firm advocate and supporter of this. Can you explain to me why we having, we're still having job interruptions, protests, and things like that? And how can you assure this body that we are not going to have that right at the time when we're showing off our city to the DNC?
Yeah, so we are in everyday conversations with workers at the airport, specifically SEIU and Unite Here, to try to address any concerns they have. We are in constant communication with the airport to try to mediate the best effort on how we can try to calm, and we want labor, the mayor wants labor harmony, labor peace at the airport, that's our goal. So, we're working through with our partners at the airport to try to get to that part. I mean, we were meeting regularly about it, and we're trying to come up with solutions to try to stop, you know, not have work stoppages.
See, my feeling is that we own that airport, we are the job owner, they are subcontractors. We passed a law, that law, so it was designed so that we didn't get black eyes on national TV. I'm just uncomfortable about how we, not with the airport management, I'm gonna say that three times, not with the airport management, not with the airport, but where is the incentive for these subcontractors not to have us in a position where, and when people look at it on national TV, they're not gonna say that, oh, that's a subcontractor, they're gonna say the city of Philadelphia has not done labor peace, and we are actively looking for other opportunities to put us on the world stage. We had the Pope, we now have the DNC, there are other big ticket items we want to have, and one of the reasons we won the Pope concession was the fact that we had relatively labor peace, and that is a concern of mine, as we try to get more revenues, more flights, more conventions, more visitors coming through that airport expeditiously, and not on the backs of labor.
And we, and we...
I know I'm preaching to the choir.
No, you, no, that's, we definitely agree with that, and we're working internally very hard to try to, like I said, not have any work stoppages at the airport and have labor peace. That's the number one priority, especially for my office, as we move forward.
So, I know you're for it, I know the mayor's for it.
Right.
What are we doing, though? Give me a specific, are they meeting?
Yes. We are, we are working to, we are, I'm trying to say this out...
You don't have to say, say we're on it.
Yeah, we're, no, we're definitely on it, it's a number one, it's a main priority for us to have labor peace.
I don't want to be involved with the who of the labor, but the what, the impact is. And finally, we are prepared, no, I'll wait for the next round, Mr. President. No? You want, no, I'll wait.
Okay. All right, Councilman, thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Green. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to follow up on some of the questions you had asked earlier regarding the capacity expansion program at the airport. Because of the CEP program, the airport was not able to go to market in reference to bonds. So I understand they're gonna be doing a significant commercial paper program, I believe, this year. Can you provide some more information about that as well as your outreach in reference to vendors of color, especially in the professional services sector that could help in that effort?
Good morning, Councilman. Tracy Boarda speaking. Yes, the CEP program that we have, we currently have a $350 million CEP program, which offers a ton of benefits when you're... When you have a large capital program such as ours. First and foremost, it provides flexibility with just-in-time funding. It's amazing, the lower interest costs that you pay on this program. That's probably the second most important. We've been able to, to date, probably only about $1.2 million in interest cost, whereas if we had done a large fixed-funding bond deal when we originally went out, we probably would have paid closer to $35 million in interest costs. So overall, the program has been very beneficial to us. With regard to your second question, which is how are we reaching out to the professional services minority community, minority women-owned community? I'll start off, and I don't know if Shelley or Kathy want to add on, but we... I guess last fall, we had an economic opportunity forum. I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact name. Yeah, but we spoke. We reached out to...
October. It was in October.
Oh, thank you, Shelley. It was in October. I believe we had over... Was it 350 or 500?
Almost 500.
Yeah. Over 500 attendees at that program. What we did during that day was we talked about the way you can locate contracting opportunities with the city, the way you can register on the city's website to be notified of those opportunities. We walked them through the upcoming opportunities that we would have in the next year, professional service and non-professional service contracting opportunities. It was a really well-attended event. And I think we also provided time for meet and greets between prime and subcontractors, which was very beneficial to the minority and women-owned businesses in the room.
And just if... It's my understanding you're gonna expand the CEP program this year as well?
Right now, we're in discussions with the city treasurer's office about strategies going forward. That would be one option to potentially expand the program. Another option would be to take out the CEP program with a fixed-rate deal and then re-up the CEP program so that, again, it becomes a revolving availability. But take out what we've spent to date. To date, we've spent about $190 million in CP. We were gonna monitor where our spend is, and there could be a deal as needed as early as the spring. We're not quite sure. But we work closely with the city treasurer.
I know PGW also, because they also gonna go to market because of potential sale of the CEP program. And it's my understanding this fall, they'll be taking out the CEP to do a fixed deal. So it seems like you're looking at both options as a potential. And going into spring, you'll be making some type of decision?
Yes. Yeah, we're...
Also, in reference to 8A, you still do 8A certifications at the airport?
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with that.
You still do the 8A certifications at the airport?
8A. I don't...
Yeah, I know. Do we... No, we don't do... No, we don't do those any longer.
You told me about that, okay. Another point in reference to autism. I know the airport's done a very good job over the years providing opportunities for families and children on the spectrum. I know some years ago, I participated in a program with my son with Dr. Wendy Ross and Autism Inclusion Resources at the airport. My understanding, you're still continuing those type of initiatives? And if you could speak on that?
Yes. You're talking about the airport's autism access program. It is a great program. In fact, I think we were the first in the nation to institute it. And I do recall you participating in the program. It's a great program that allows any autistic individual or families with autistic children to come to the airport to basically experience what it is like, all the sights and sounds that go along with getting onto a flight. So they make their way through ticketing, through security, and actually board a plane. The only thing missing is actual takeoff. But we do have them taxi around the airfield. So they sort of get more comfortable with that experience and hopefully become future passengers of the airport. So our next event is actually May 10 in the evening. And we're working with several families right now to have another good event at the airport.
As a follow-up to looking at your budget testimony, when you provide information on the top 10 domestic origination and destination destinations, as well as top five international origination and destination destinations, what steps are we taking to try to grow the airport? I know because of some of the changes in industry, carriers are putting more people on planes. And actually, that's part of the reason why there's been changes in the CEP program. But are we trying to use the DNC to strategically leverage opportunities for growth at the airport? I know I've had a similar conversation with PIDC in reference to Navy Yard. Considering we have such a large number of people coming through the airport for this event, how are we trying to leverage that opportunity to grow the airport both domestically and nationally?
I don't know that we look at the DNC as an opportunity to really leverage additional destinations. But we work that constantly with both existing domestic and international partners, airlines that serve the airport today, as well as folks that we don't have. We do... We participate in a number of domestic and international conferences where we meet with them. We put together business cases to try and show that if an airline that is not currently at the airport were to come and serve us, how they could be profitable. All sorts of stuff. But at the end of the day, it's really about the bottom line to them. They want to make sure that if they devote a very expensive asset or set of assets, planes, to a route in Philadelphia, that it's gonna be profitable. On the domestic side, we've been successful this year. We have serviced to... From three carriers to 17 new additional cities. Two of those are brand-new cities that we didn't have serviced to before. And so we're very excited about that. We're also continuing to work the international angle.
Just to wrap up, because my time is up, wanted to get some perspective on who would you say are your main competitors in reference to trying to grow on domestic side and international, especially considering the changes in industry over the past couple of years?
So who competitors of the airport are? We have competitors really in two groups, Councilmen. One is regionally. So the folks in Philadelphia, in some ways, are lucky because they can travel to Newark, to New York, or down to Washington DC to get on airplanes. We need to make sure that our flights offer great service to a large number of cities and that they're competitive in price. The main way you can assure price competitiveness is to have more than one airline flying a route. And we're happy to say that on our top 15 routes, the most traveled routes at the airport, we do have more than one airline flying them. So that's one way that we can address the competition, and it's regional. The second group of competitors is really the other American Airlines hubs. American Airlines carries two... Three-quarters of our passengers. And, you know, we're about, what, 55% origination and destination folks who get on and off airplanes and stay in Philadelphia, and 45% connecting. They just get off a plane and get on another one and fly out. That connecting traffic is vulnerable, if you will, because American can choose to connect that traffic through any one of their hubs. So we have to make sure that we maintain a competitive posture with the other American Airlines hubs in terms of cost and in terms of efficiency of operations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Excuse me. Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick questions. Good morning.
Good morning.
It's been a long one. Good morning, ladies.
Good morning.
How are you today? I just had a couple of questions. Actually, more statements. And I was hoping that you could discuss the airport a little bit further, picking up sort of on Councilman Green's question about competitiveness in the region. And just knowing what a tight airspace we have here in Philadelphia. It's very, very congested. We have, by my counting, correct me if I'm wrong, you've got LaGuardia, JFK, Newark, Baltimore, Dulles, and Reagan?
That's correct.
That's... Okay. And so that's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 other airports in the region. All that, you know, as you said, we're very fortunate that we have quite a selection to choose from. But there's no place like home.
That's right.
And Philadelphia International does such a great job. One of the things that I noticed from your testimony, and I'll beat you up just a little bit. And I remember saying the same thing to Mark Gill when he was here, is that we don't promote the great things that we do enough. I just really don't feel that in our testimony. It speaks to the airport, the amount of competitiveness that we have in this region, and what we do with the small amount of land that we have. We have a very small parcel of land. I kind of liken it to if you have an envelope, a letter-sized envelope, and you have a stamp on that envelope. The stamp is about the amount of land that we have to work with versus the entire envelope, almost, for many of these other airports. And so when I read that we've accommodated 31.4 million passengers last year alone and 400,000 tons of freight and mail annually, it's enormous. It's huge. And again, we do it with a very small amount of land. We make it work. And so, you know, I just really would like to see us talk a little bit more and promote ourselves with all the good things that we do. Philadelphia is ahead of the curve. Philadelphia International Airport, I should say, is ahead of the curve on so many different things. And, you know, I do want to acknowledge also Kathleen Fadilla, who, you know, is your first transgender appointee and who's doing a wonderful, wonderful job.
Yes, she is.
And really appreciate you being here and support you 1,000%. And when you talk about, again, being ahead of the curve, you know, let's promote all of the things that we do that are way out there, way ahead of the curve, and that really do speak to how, you know, we're forward-thinking in Philadelphia.
Point taken. I can talk... I could probably talk for hours about all the things that we do well at the airport. You know, I think I would just highlight two for you right now. Sure. One is our award-winning arts program. We have a number of displays throughout the airport. They're all done by local artists. We have permanent art displays, and we have temporary ones. And, you know, it's something that really calms the passenger and gives them something to smile about as they come through the airport. The second thing I'm gonna talk to you about is really a forward-looking thing. But we, I guess about a month ago, we shot a video that will be viewed by all airport employees. There are approximately 20,000 airport employees that have to get a badge. And when the employees go in to get their badge, they will have to view this five-minute video on customer service. And it's really gonna reinforce some of the great things that we do today. It has little vignettes of great examples of customer service and not-so-great examples. But it'll bring to the top of everyone's mind the issue of how we need to treat our customers and our passengers each and every day. We have lots of things. I'll come and spend some more time with you and talk about that. But point taken for next year.
Thank you. Can you speak just a little bit about the amount of congestion that we have in this region? Just air congestion, I mean. Because when... I remember a few years ago being on a flight coming into Philadelphia. And I remember the pilot making a statement. You know, we're delayed. Oh, it's Philadelphia again, you know? And I wanted to, you know, what? Can't say... You know, now you can't say anything bad about pilots or whatever. But it was really inappropriate. It was highly inappropriate and very unprofessional to make a statement about Philadelphia being the cause of what was happening in the air. Where, as you know, because of the amount of congestion, if you have a storm in New York or you have a storm in, you know, to the south in DC, or of course, here in Philadelphia, there's a ripple effect. There's an effect on what happens, not just here in Philadelphia, but somehow we end up getting the brunt of the blame for, you know, the operations throughout the region.
We do. And, you know, delays are really... There are really three things that can ultimately start to solve the delay problems. One is pavement on the ground. And that was our, you know, the new runway and some of the airfield improvements that we're making. It's not just the new runway, though. By adding additional taxiways for... Giving airplanes additional ways to get to the runways and to queue up for the flights will ultimately allow it to operate more efficiently. We're doing those tax... That taxiway work, some of it now, even without the new runway. The decline in operations has really reduced the delays at Philadelphia. It's not near as bad.
I saw that, yeah.
As it was, you know, it's been going down for the past 10 years. It's down by 23%.
So what's happening there? Is that... That's like the... We're not accepting as many smaller planes? Are they going to Northeast Philadelphia Airport or other places? Is that what's happening?
Two main reasons. One is that the airlines are upgauging their fleet. They're flying larger aircraft with more seats. So that is exactly one of the reasons. The second is that the load factors, so the number of people, the percent full of each plane is going up as well.
Okay.
So both of those factors contribute to the fact that operations, takeoffs and landings, are down by 23%. But passenger levels are only down by 3% and actually on the rise.
Okay.
So we're serving just as many passengers, almost, but a lot fewer operations, which helps to reduce the delays. There are two other things that can help reduce delays. One is, you said, we're in a very busy part of the country. And so it's the airspace above us that's controlled by the FAA. And an airspace redesign is another issue that can help, not really completely in our control, but something that we talk to them about. And then the third is technology. You may have heard about NextGen. It's aircraft technology that'll help more precisely locate the position of aircraft and allow more operations to happen in a shorter period of time.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squillen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, ladies. And it's...
Good morning.
Great to see a very professional woman leading the airport alone. So my issue, too, is that, obviously, we're still trying to grow. So we want to attract some airlines, direct flights. And we talked about Asia and some other places, too. Is that something that is a top priority for the airport? And what can we do to help?
It absolutely is a top priority for the airport. It's one of our missing links in our network, It's, it's one of our missing links in our network, that we don't have direct service to Asia. So I think some of our biggest opportunities exist with other one-world alliance partners. So American Airlines, when US Airways merged with American and became the new American, they became part of the one-world alliance. And there are some one-world carriers that we are, are redoubling our efforts to try and attract to come in, because if they're part of the alliance, it helps with baggage connections, they can sell the same tickets, that sort of thing, they can work together more seamlessly to provide that direct service. So, you know, one that comes to mind that flies to one of our top underserved cities in Asia is Japan Airlines to Tokyo. So that's one that we're talking about. When it comes to putting those business cases together, anything that we can do as a region, as a council, as an airport, to show that there are business folks who are gonna get on those planes and buy those business class seats and first-class seats, and then visitors to help fill up economy, anything we can do to make that case is helpful. And I'd be happy to talk with you further about how we might be able to work together to do that.
I mean, that's great, I know we're working with Commerce too on that.
Yes.
Avenue, and because I think once the Asian population realizes Philadelphia's geographic location to everything else and comes here, to me, there's no turning around, because we're, we're situated in such a great location from New York and Baltimore and DC, and we're right in the middle of everything, and it's better to fly here than have to fly there. I mean, it is frustrating, we want to fly out of Philadelphia, and when sometimes people go overseas, they have to fly, they drive to another airport to go. And I think Philadelphia, being the city that it is, don't want to give up to another city what we could be doing here.
I agree. I'd like to point out that we are, the airport is actually aligned under the Commerce Department now, under this administration. So that, that makes us natural partners to work on those initiatives together, and we are absolutely doing that.
Well, that makes a lot of sense, and knowing that we're here to help, and so whatever we could do also to encourage that type of development and work, working relationship, I think will go a long way to, you know, let, let the people know that we really want to encourage them to be here, and whatever we could do to help them get here, we're on board with you. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Council President, I have an answer to your initial question about the composition of our exhibits.
I was, I was gonna tell you to get out of here while you can.
Oh, all right. I can do that.
I'll tell you what, on your way out, just slip it to me.
I will do that, thank you.
All right. All right, thank, thank you all for your testimony.
Thank you, sir.